I would like to call the meeting to order. And you all can rise with me for the pleasantries.
Let the religions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Stacey, can we do a roll call, please?
Justin Rock.
Here.
David Glade.
Here.
Karine Dudo.
Here.
Nicole Howard.
Here.
Molly Keane is, might be a little late. Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
Denise Wheeler.
Here.
Perfect, thank you. All right, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, we actually do have a small change. Commissioner Scarfow was not able to attend tonight, so number eight on the agenda is going to be deleted.
Is there an item on the consent agenda that any of the councilors would like to discuss further at this time? Nope. Do we have a motion?
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. At this time is public comments. So if there is any individuals out there that would like to come up and address the council on any non-agenda items, this is the time. If you can refrain to a three-minute time limit, though. It looks like we have a lot of people in the room, so it's going to be a busy night. Is there anybody that would like to address the council? All right. All right, our public hearing and first reading by title only, proposed ordinance medium-density residential to general commercial on a zoning map from residential to commercial on a comprehensive map. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing and ask the city recorder to read the rules of order in the entirety and state the rules of order will apply to both public hearings this evening.
The city council will conduct two quasi-judicial public hearings. These rules of order are applicable to the public hearings to consider rezoning property from residential medium-density to general commercial. File number 02-009-23, applicant Mike Becker. And rezoning property from light industrial to general commercial. File number 01-ZON-23, applicant Dan Beckner. Each hearing will proceed as follows. The mayor will request a staff report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the issues under consideration in the application. Subsequent to opening each of the public hearings, the mayor will accept testimony relating to the application. The mayor may state a time limit for testimony. All testimony must be directed toward the applicable criteria. Oregon land use law requires that all issues raised by a participant during the hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the hearing body and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise the issues during the hearing may invalidate future appeal. The proceedings are being electronically recorded to be transcribed into written minutes. When testifying, please step to the podium and state your name. Before leaving the podium, please complete the speaker sign and sheet. The applicant will be invited to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to parties to clarify any issues raised or to rebut testimony. Proponents then opponents will be provided an opportunity to clarify any issues or to rebut testimony. If additional documents or new evidence is introduced during the hearing, any participant may request a continuation of the hearing. Any participant may request that the hearing record be kept open for seven days to submit additional written evidence or testimony for the purpose of responding to new evidence, unless waived the applicant has seven days to submit a written response. Members of the city council may ask questions of the staff or hearing participants at any time. The mayor may then close the hearing or continue the hearing at a specified time and place. All decisions must be based on findings of fact from the staff report or evidence and testimony received, which relate to the criteria of the land use decision. An appeal of the city council decision must be made in writing to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, together with the required fee, within 21 days from the date that the final decision is mailed to the applicant and interested participants. Before the mayor requests the staff report for each of the public hearings, the city councilors will be asked to make any declarations or challenges. A counselor must declare any ex parte or pre-hearing contact, including the person's name and the nature of the discussion, as well as any citations to the area in question. Counselors should declare any personal or financial interests in this matter and may disqualify themselves from participation in the hearing. The mayor will then ask if anyone in the audience wishes to challenge the right of any counselor to hear this matter.
Thank you. At this time, is there any counselors declaring of ex parte contact or conflicts of interest to this first reading?
I've had a discussion with Dan Beckner a little bit, did an unrelated event, about just the history of what they're doing, but I don't have any financial or personal interest in it. I don't feel the nature of that would disqualify me.
The other counselors? Is there any of the audience that wish to challenge any of the counselors the right to hear this matter or to vote on it? I show there's none. And with that, can we have our staff report, Mike?
Yeah, so just for clarification, I think you'll be asking for conflicts of interest at the next public hearing as well. And this public hearing is for Mike Becker's rezone. And so Dave, you may be asked again to do that. But this request, while it is one application, it's essentially two map changes. We have a zoning map in the land use code, and we have a comprehensive plan, which is more of a long-range planning map. And both of those require a change for this rezone from residential to commercial. And this request has generated a fair amount of interest, partly because of our city requirement for, which I'll just kind of point it to you really quick, because I usually emphasize this heavily with applicants, but it's on page eight of this application. And it's the land use planning goal, which is consistent with a statewide planning goal that requires an applicant to, under policies one and three, to have some factual basis for the rezone and a need to rezone the property. And not based on, I just wanted to rezone this, it's inconvenient, but that there's some kind of a need for additional commercial zoning, and this rezone is going to accommodate that. And so part of that is I ask applicants to provide a conceptual plan of, what do you have in mind to use this property for as you look to rezone this to commercial? And so in this case, the applicant has been thinking about an RV park for a while. And so that is the concept that was presented in the application, which, you know, probably mostly my fault, it kind of generated some confusion with the review process, because it was interpreted as that is the project that is proposed, and there's no other options, you know, on the table. And so pretty much most or all of the comments that came in on a lot of the planning commission discussion focused on an RV park, when the focus is really on the rezone to commercial, because that's a conceptual idea that's out there. And it may occur, but it also, general commercial allows a lot of different commercial uses, and all of those are going to become opportunities, depending on what the market demand is and the applicant chooses to do with his property. But so as we kind of move forward, we worked through that at the planning commission, but as we kind of worked through that, I just wanted to put that on the table for you tonight. Our discussion tonight is not specific to an RV park. Tonight's discussion is just from rezoning from residential to commercial to allow a commercial use on this property.
Mike, can I ask you just along with that really fast?
Yes.
If this is rezoned, an RV park, I'm assuming would go through some sort of approval process. Does that approval process take place on the planning commission level, or is that elevated to the council level? What's, can you give us an idea of what would come down the road if that were to happen?
Yeah, I could probably look really quick, because I didn't get to, I think the RV park is a conditional use permit that would go before the planning commission. Many of the commercial uses that are allowed in the commercial zone would not go to the planning commission. So if it was a retail type use, similar to like the Miller's Home Center, that's an administrative site plan review, and that would not go through a planning commission process unless they're asking for an exception or unless it's appealed. So, yeah, so from a public process standpoint, if an RV park is truly proposed down the road, it would go through a planning commission review process.
The public would have some ability to provide input to the planning commission on their thoughts there?
They will. They'll have, yeah, essentially the same kind of forum, but they also have the opportunity in the administrative process. We do public notice, and they can still participate in that process as well. So it's, there's lots of opportunities for the public to engage.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there's a lot of information in the staff report. In the planning commission, essentially, we found that the rezone meets all of the city's comp plan requirements for that need to rezone. We have a surplus of residential zoned land. We have a couple hundred acres of surplus land in just residential in general, and a hundred and some acres in specifically in medium-density residential, that surplus. And so the loss of just eight acres in the residentially zoned isn't going to impact us on our residential land needs supply. And we do have a need, which we're kind of at the 11th hour of funding our economic needs analysis, or opportunities analysis, to identify what our commercial and industrial land needs are. And so we know we have a need in both commercial and industrial land. We just don't know what that amount is. But with that in mind, switching from residential to commercial to eliminate the surplus and to go towards something that we have a deficit is certainly something that we support as staff and the planning commission supported. The issues that raised concern, I guess at the public hearing level, is ODOT raised concerns regarding potential traffic conflicts that are, I guess, thought to be present at the Walton intersection in Island. And as part of, generally as part of rezoning, you do a traffic analysis to evaluate potential future uses and what those impacts would have on the transportation system, and then you predict what improvements you would need to make to those systems to handle the traffic load. And Island City had similar concerns, on the Island City side.
I have a question.
Yes.
I know that they want to reevaluate the infrastructure there because of, for Island City. Is there a date when it's going to be evaluated again about the sewer system?
I don't know that. I think that would be something that would be coordinated as part of a project, a development project. And I'm sure our city public works would be involved, since there, all of that sewer goes to La Grande Sewer Treatment Facility. And so there's, I think the resources are there to evaluate it, and Anderson Perry would probably be involved as well. But I would anticipate that would occur at the time a project is actually proposed. So anyway, yes, Island City's concerns were predominantly related to the impacts that a project would have on this property, would occur predominantly in Island City, because that's where all of the access and transportation would go through. And so they've asked for some of the similar considerations that ODOT has asked, but additionally, there's some other land use review processes that they've asked to occur at the same time in their jurisdiction. So that if we go through a site plan review process for a commercial project, whether it's a retail development or whether it's an RV park, that process also goes through Island City, so they can address the road infrastructure and access and sewer needs and all those things at the same time. And so just through discussions with ODOT and Island City, those, the traffic analysis and the working together on the land use process are included as two conditions of approval in this request. And kind of going back to the traffic analysis, one of the elements that we had a lot of discussion on is, is do you do a traffic analysis now, or do you do a traffic analysis at the time of development? And this property has been studied fairly heavily. ODOT has done quite a few studies on this with the Island Avenue improvements. There was a, I have to look at my notes here, but the, there's a specific plan, a Riverside specific plan, that evaluated this a number of years ago. And Island City adopted a transportation plan element out of that. And so there's been a number of traffic analysis components that have been done over the years. We have a pretty good idea of what the needs are for transportation. And so through the discussions that I've had with ODOT and Island City, they're supportive of the condition of approval that's included, that essentially kicks the can down the road on the traffic analysis. Rather than doing one now based on hypothetical projects and trying to make up a highest and most impactful use commercial project, and what impacts would that have? The argument that I presented was, why don't we just do the analysis at the time that an actual development is proposed? And then whatever improvements are required of the applicant in the project at that time, we'll know what they are, rather than having to do the study again, so that we can then advise the applicant what improvements are necessary for their specific project. And so I think it's a cost savings for everybody, and I think it makes sense. And, yeah, and all parties at this point have supported that. So you see that as a condition of approval. And so other than that, the planning commission kind of went through all this and found that it meets the requirements, supports the conditions of approval, and is forward it to you and is recommending your support as well. Do you have any questions?
Was it a unanimous vote by the planning commission?
I believe it was.
I have another question. In there, it talks about RVs and tiny homes. So is it just going to be RV, or are they going to have little tiny homes? Or do you consider the RVs the tiny homes?
Well, if it is an RV park, we would not consider them tiny homes, because it's an RV, an RV park is not residential.
Yeah, because in the description, it said slash RV tiny homes.
And it could, and it could be. So I guess we'll have to kind of see when the development actually occurred, but that's probably something that could be considered. And then going back, Karine, to your answer, we had one planning commissioner that I think, I don't know if she voted no or if she abstained, because she wanted to, she wanted the report to be revised to better reflect the RV park as a conceptual plan before she made her vote. And the remaining, rest of the planning commission didn't want to hold up the process, and so I think she might have been the only no vote.
All right. Thank you, Mike. At this time, I'd like to invite public testimony in favor of the project? Neutral? Opposition? Nope. Perfect. Any counselor discussion?
There's one thing that was stated in Exhibit B, talking about the railroad, the rail crossing being low clearance and so forth. Is there any anticipation if this goes on, that we will have warning signs that they might go ahead? Because it said that, you noticed that they were scraping, trying to get into that entryway? Or would we fix the road so that would not happen?
I think that would be something that would be part of the traffic study, based on the users that would be coming and going. Because it's unclear what is causing that scraping. Is it the manufactured home business that's there with, or is, yeah, is it garbage trucks? Is it lowboy stuff coming in and out of Eastern Oregon rental? Do they even use that? I mean, there's a, there's a number of different things that could cause that. But as far as the improvement that would go, I can't speak for the Island City process, but for the La Grande process, we can only require or would only require improvements that are directly attributed to the project that's proposed. Anything else, we would have to try to figure out how we're going to solve that. But so as part of a project, they would do a traffic study, you'd figure out what type of traffic comes and goes, and is that crossing capable of supporting that type of use?
So Mike, is this whole plot completely in the city of La Grande?
No.
Some of it, that's what I thought. So some of it was in Some of it, that's what I thought. So some of it was in LeGrand and some in Island City?
Yeah, it's roughly 17 something acres, 17-ish, about eight acres, a little under eight acres is within LeGrand, its own residential. The remainder of this particular tax lot is in Island City and has, I think, a business park zoning.
I see. Okay.
So if part of it's in Island City, do they also have to go through the same process we are going through?
Not for the rezone because it's already commercial. And so only LeGrand goes through the rezone. But the condition of approval you'll see is for the land use piece because there is some shared activity that, that would likely occur.
So the part that's designated business park is in Island City and that's, that, is that part of this plot?
I don't know if all of it is, but, but I think what's reflected on that map, yes.
Okay.
There may be some other parcels in that zoning on, on the Island City side.
And then have any of the neighboring residential property owners given any comments?
I have not received any.
Because there's some right next to that.
Have the, what notification would they have been given outside of just regular public notice? Did we reach out specifically? Did they get mailbox?
They'll get, they get postcards mailed to them. So, so all of them, I think it's within 100 feet or so of surrounding this property. I don't know how many postcards went out, but.
100 feet?
Yeah, that's, that's our code requirement and we cannot do notice, we cannot, as the city, do notice beyond that. That's not allowed. But.
Well, there's some pretty nice homes down there and that's Riverfront property. And if you've been down to that area, you'll recognize that that's, I mean, that's some prime real estate if somebody were going to put in some nicer homes there. And I would be surprised if, I guess I'm surprised that there wasn't some feedback. And it makes me wonder if some of the residents along there who could be affected by proposed use were aware of it.
Yeah, I mean, there's quite, there's, there's several adjacent properties. And I mean, I think a lot of them know each other. And so I know the last time we went through this, this effort, we're to melt the, you know, got a lot of folks engaged. But, you know, I think at least all of the adjacent property owners were notified. And, you know, there's, they're large pieces. And so that, those would be the folks that would bear the brunt of any impact that would occur.
And the only access is going to be through Walton Road?
Correct.
So there's not going to be an access going
Across the river.
The other way?
Not currently. There, there is on a kind of a long range master plan, there's, there's potential for roads to be extended west. It's going to require eminent domain and a number of different things in order to acquire properties to do that. So right now there is, there is no access opportunity. So that would be something that would have to be acquired. But, you know, I know when the Island City adopted plan, there are some east-west connectors that go through. Some of those are in LeGrand. LeGrand did not adopt that. But, but they are things that, that would be considered depending on what type of development is proposed.
And would this impact the, the possible greenway?
At this point, it's not because it's, it's just property bordering the greenway.
Bordering.
Yeah. So it's not, yeah, it doesn't include any of the greenway property. So if anything, it would probably make, depending on what the uses, it might complement the greenway project if, you know, especially if it's an RV park and you, you have some additional users that may, might use that. But, but if it's a commercial project, a retail office development or something, it may or may not have much of a benefit to that at all other than providing an access to me. But, yeah, it's, it's really not connected or associated with the greenway.
I, I know that we are not considering this zoning change necessarily in light of what the proposed use would be that we're supposed to consider it maybe outside of that. But I would, I would hope that, you know, if the use of an RV park, you know, if that comes before the planning commission, that they would consider some of the assumptions that have been made here, which is that, that we're in some dire need of additional RV spaces. I, I happen to know the owners of one of those parks who informed me that they are rarely fully booked outside of holiday weekends. And they certainly, you know, I, I think you could challenge the assumption that there, that there's a great need for short-term RV. There seems to be a great need for long-term RV parking, but to me that's a very different use than a short-term RV. And.
Yeah. And just related to that, Dave, and counsel was, for an RV park, we permit them as an RV park, but we do not regulate the length of stay. And so that's why you see a lot of long-term RVers in RV parks. And it, and it is becoming more common. I anticipate someday in our future, we'll probably see something at the state level. And it's, it's occurring in other states where they actually recognize RV living as a, as a housing choice. We don't in Oregon yet, but, but I would anticipate that's probably coming someday.
Any more questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. At this time, I'd like the recorder to read the proposed ordinance for the first time by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of LeGrand, Oregon, rezoning property from medium density residential to general commercial on the zoning map, from residential to commercial on the comprehensive plan map and declaring an effective date.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is to continue to October 4th, 2023, at which time the proposed ordinance is scheduled to be read a second time by title only and considered and adopted. Now we will move on to our next public hearing. This one will be the public hearing and first reading by title only of the proposed ordinance rezoning property from light industrial to general commercial on the zoning map from industrial to commercial on the comprehensive plan. The public hearing and that rules order was read already and in its entirety being previously heard. At this time with this reading, is there any counselor declaring of ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest?
Do you want me to restate?
Please.
So I, I had a conversation with Mr. Beckner, just, you know, kind of general ideas of what the use of this would entail for them and, and a little bit of background on the, the projects that he had there. So again, I, it was general and, but if I could disclose that.
Any other counsel? Is there anybody in the audience that wish to challenge the right of any counselor to hear this matter? There is none. And with that, can we have the staff report, Mike?
Yeah. So, so I wanted to at least start off with, I guess clarification when you get to the public comment piece because you have a number of public comment letters. And so consistent, not so much with the planning commission hearing process, but with, with the council hearing process and the three minute time limit for, for public testimony. Generally, when somebody submits a letter in writing, that is their testimony. And they do not also get an additional three minutes to present their letter and then also have three minutes to speak. So, and depending on how you want to manage the hearing, the typical process would be they could come up and they could read their letter to you and they, to present that as their testimony. Or we could discard the letter and they can have three minutes to talk to you. And so depending on how you want to manage that, that's typically how that process would work. So at least the public knows that you don't get the letter plus three minutes. You get three minutes to either read your letter and add stuff or, you know. So depending how you want to manage that time limit.
Yeah. Once we get to that point, if, there is a lot of you out there. And so if everybody wants to speak, that's great. But if we can have any new information, you know, the over and over the same information, we understand. But if you have new information, please come forward and speak. But that will be in the public comment portion. So not at this time.
Yeah.
With that, Mr. Mike?
Yeah. So for the staff report, very similar to the, the last application, the, the focus that we take as, as staff and even the state takes in, in their review and which I instruct the planning commission to take is the focus of, of the review criteria really hinges around the land use planning goal, which on this application is on page 10. And it's at policy one and three, again, where you have a factual need and, you know, to, to rezone. You're not, in this case, we're, we're pretty much rezoning the property to accommodate a tenant. We're not, we're not rezoning to accommodate a need for additional commercial land or industrial land. And so we really struggled with this at the planning commission level. And, and the planning commission did find some justification to recommend to you to support a need for the zone change. But that, but this is something I, I would like you to focus on in your conversations, is to make sure you agree with the planning commission's evaluation that, that there's actually a need for the zone change. And so as, as we kind of think about that, just to give some background, as we're spending right now about $50,000 on an economic needs analysis to identify how much commercial and industrial land do we need? And we're probably going to spend the same or more on going through the next step to actually go out and ask property owners to come into the city and zone their properties, commercial or industrial. And the expectation of that process, when we make that investment, is that businesses that fit that zoning will locate on those properties that we zone that way. And if it's not convenient, then we ask them to go find a property that is properly zoned to support their use. And in this case, there's a number of properties that could support this tenant that are available today. There's some that have come and gone. They don't all meet the needs that the tenant has for their long-range vision. Some of them might, some of them might be new construction, some of them might just be available for rent or, and not for ownership. But that is part of the challenge is, is, is do we really have a need for the rezone when there's opportunities available for a tenant to locate elsewhere? And so that, that was the struggle the planning commission had for probably an hour and a half at, at their meeting as they listened to testimony and tried to figure this out because it's, you know, it kind of became an emotional issue. And it, it's something that, this is a organization that the commission supports and is passionate about. And folks that are here are probably passionate about it and you'll hear from them. And so it's, it's a tough decision. And so, so what we have right now from an inventory standpoint is we know we have virtually no industrial land left. We have one or two sites that are available. And this is one of the sites that our consultants identified as a potentially available site for redevelopment. Other than that, we have no industrial land available for, for industrial growth. We have to go out and find property in the county to bring into the city and its own industrial. And so losing an industrial property is a big deal. And likewise for commercial, right now we have, we have vacant sites and we have available sites. And so our need isn't as great. And so to lose commercial or to lose industrial and gain additional commercial, we're not really doing ourselves any favors. And so, you know, so, so really as, as you evaluate, you know, the criteria, that's, that's what I asked of the planning commission, I would ask of you is, is there a need for, for the rezone? And is it based on, on fact, on a factual need? Or is it just based on, on, on emotion and us trying to accom, you know, make an accommodation? Yeah. So, so what the planning commission, just to kind of speed up forwards, the planning commission did their justification on need based on commercial, for the commercial need based on types of commercial uses and compatibility with their neighbors. Is they've, they outlined a scenario where not all commercial uses are compatible with each other and some of them need to be spaced out and separated from their commercial neighbors. And we don't have a large inventory of vacant commercial parcels that meet the different criteria of need that different commercial businesses have. And this particular user needs a space that is a little bit separated from their neighbors because they create some impacts that could be mitigated by having that separation. And so that's how the planning commission determined that this rezone could be supported on the basis of need, but it is based on their opinion and it's not based on any study or any factual evidence of that need. But, but that is the conclusion the planning commission came up with after about an hour and a half of discussing this because they really wanted to approve this request. And so, so with that, I don't have anything else to add, but do you have any questions?
I do, Mike. It's about this issue of compatibility, which I came up in the staff report too. And that seems like, it, it's a little bit soft. It's a little bit subjective. And so I can imagine one would arrive at a conclusion about compatibility based on all kinds of things. So is that something that is more flexible within the rezoning criteria? This notion of compatibility? Or do we have rubrics or guidelines? Because I don't remember, you know, this is my, a lot fear doing this. And I have not, I don't have a recollection of saying, a business is not compatible, therefore, you know, the rezoning isn't justified. I can't imagine that we're arbiters of compatibility. If, if you fit the zoning, then you go there, right?
Yeah, that is the assumption is that if you fit the zoning category, you are a compatible use with all of the other uses that are in that zone. So that is the assumption that's made with zoning in general. And we, we break down the impacts, one application at a time based on what that user has. And we try to, going through the land use processes, mitigate those impacts to minimize them. It doesn't influence the compatibility definition, but, but that's how you mitigate those compatibility issues or those impacts is through mitigation measures such as fencing and vegetation and dealing with parking and, and all of the things that we have in our land use code. But there is no definition of compatibility. And in fact, it's one of those things that if you recall in the code amendments that we just, we just completed in the conditional use permit piece, we spent a fair amount of time, at least at the planning commission and work session level, of rewriting that entire section to eliminate compatibility from the terminology used at all. And, and state law is also doing very similar is, is anywhere where you have those subjective words anyway, is they try to eliminate those because those are things that everybody has their own definition. And, and it's hard to create a standard that everybody agrees with when you have something subjective.
So then to follow up this.
That's correct.
So we do have precedent, local precedent for compatibility. As I recall, when I first joined the council, we turned away an animal care business that wanted to come in next to a restaurant, you know, so that we, we have discussed.
It was in a different conversation though, different context. I don't think that was a zoning conversation, was it?
It wasn't a zoning issue, but it was a compatibility issue, you know? And so within that, like we have, we have talked locally about, you know, where things fit and would it be appropriate for this to go in next to this and, and that? And.
Yeah. And I, and I think that's a fair conversation to have. And so as you have that and you look at it in the sense of compatibility, you're really looking at the impacts that uses are going to have. And making a judgment call based on your own experiences and opinions is this impact going to have, is it an acceptable level of impact that I could live with? Everybody's going to have an impact, but is, is that level of impact something that we can live with? And if, if you decide, no, it's not, then you would determine it's not compatible because that level of impact is way too high. We can't live with that. So that's part of that compatibility conversation.
And we are very thin on light industrial zoned properties.
We are very thin. The only industrial zoned properties that we have are the LeGrand Business and Technology Park. That, you know, it has its limits. We have some heavy industrial out by the airport that those property owners have vocally advised our economic development director not to call me anymore because I am not willing to entertain any opportunities. And so right now we have nothing, we have nothing in light industrial other than, you know, this redevelopable site. And I think there might be one vacant site. But we, this, this is it.
So any business that would want to come in, light industrial wouldn't have much choice.
Yeah. And I know some of the businesses that you've heard through the rumor mill that have wanted to locate in our downtown, you know, sites like this would accommodate them. And we have turned them away because we can't find them a site. them, and we have turned them away because we can't find them a site.
But there's also a lot of vacant buildings that other people could go into. You know, the light industrial can go because we do have vacant buildings as well.
We have, we have some. Not all of them are light industrial, so depending on what their use is, some of them could go there, some of them cannot.
What about the ones downtown on Adams? There's still quite a few, and then on Fourth Street and stuff.
Yeah, those would be commercial, so like this use could go there. Like the applicant of this, of this application could go there. So that is part of the review that you had to look at, is, is there a need for this rezone? Because if there's opportunities elsewhere without doing the rezone, is it appropriate to rezone?
And there are fewer opportunities for light industrial.
Yeah, so that, yeah, so that, that is the challenge the planning commission grappled with, and I think that is the challenge that's presented to you tonight as well.
So Mike, what's, what's the history here? Because again, I mean, this, this was a commercial business, Ace Hardware, Millers. So those were not light industrial businesses, those were commercial businesses.
Right, and we discussed that, that's in your report as well.
So, I mean, help me understand some of the history, how were those allowed to go in there and operate a commercial operation in a light industrial zone, but we're going to put our foot down and say, somebody else who wants to operate a commercial, you know, type of entity can't? Help, help me understand that.
And I don't know if I could give you a good answer for that because I don't know when Millers first located there, but if you look at the size and scale of what Millers was when they were there, they were very industrial in their impact. They had a very small retail element, but their outside storage and a lot of the activity with their trust stuff and, and material coming in was very industrial. So I would imagine at the time that they were permitted to go there, if the zoning was industrial, they were probably viewed as an industrial-type business. The Ace Hardware, clearly the retail component wasn't, but all of the rest of their lumberyard would clearly be a pretty high-impact and light industrial-type environment. And so I would imagine that at the time they were permitted, that was probably how it was viewed, under today's view and just how we look at like Home Depots and, and the new Millers lumber is, it's not the same. And so we view them more as a commercial-type use under, under today's methodology and how we, how we view that. And so interpretations change over the years. But so I, I don't know when they came in, if they, if they came in in the 80s or early 90s, but it was way before my time, and I have no idea how they, you know, what it was before they were there.
I think it'd be good, in a very short, I know it's not a short answer, but give everybody a kind of a example of light industrial, so they know where we're kind of looking at versus commercial. What kind of businesses would go into a light, light industrial versus commercial?
Yeah, so the light industrial would be like a distributor business, like we've had a beer distributor want to locate in our community that we haven't been able to find a site for. That would be a, a light industrial use. They do packaging and distribution. You have, we have a number of contractors that have storage yards across the street. We have a light industrial piece that Captain Hook's purchased, and they're using as, as kind of an impound storage lot for themselves. There's auto mechanic, auto painting-related businesses that have a light industrial use. We also allow some of them, depending on the size vehicles, if you're doing large trucks and those kind of things, we, we steer them towards a light industrial property. But it's generally those manufacturing and processing and those higher-impact uses. And so uses that are, and also it's along the railroad tracks, the, you know, you can, you can have those higher-impact uses there within having lesser impact on your neighbors in those types of locations. The, um, commercial uses are generally office and retail and, and more service-oriented, and we generally want those in higher-traffic core areas and, and in the vicinity of, of other businesses where shoppers can, I guess, go to visit other stores because it's convenient in the vicinity. But those are generally your, kind of your two different types of uses.
Did you hear, did you have any feedback from the surrounding property owners on, on this?
We did not.
Okay. Same thing, they were notified if they were within 100 feet?
Yeah, and there's actually quite a few of that are within 100 feet in this particular case. There's, it's a big piece of property, and there's a lot of residences across one side. It's commercially zoned across the street to the north. There's one industrial property, there's industrial to the west and to the south. And so, you know, the rezone from a neighborhood compatibility impact of how you're going to directly impact your immediate neighbors is, is probably not significant, whether it's the current, current zoning or changing it. So it's really more of, of a fundamental need and, and a factual need for that change as opposed to looking at the specific user.
Is there any more questions from Mr. Mike? At this time, this will be the portion of public comment, if we can keep you at three minutes. And like I said before, fresh testimony each time would be, would be great. I know you all want to speak. I know, of course, in sport. But this is the time for in favor. So if you could please step to the podium and...
I want to say thank you to Mike for helping me make this application. I also want to say thank you to the commissioners who listened very carefully, and I thought, I thought they heard us and understood our needs. As a member of this community for almost 30 years, I found it somewhat compelling to see the need around us for the, the type of rehabilitation and recovery that I see that's in definite need in this community. And so I chose to align myself with Underground Oasis, and for that reason, I've tried to clarify this application. I can, I can tell you a lot about Underground Oasis just from an observer point of view, but honestly, if you really want to understand what Underground Oasis is all about, you should hear from our, our president, the one who started this ministry in 2004, did it until 2014. And during that time, we were situated at the Mercantile Building right next to the Granada Theater. During that, during that period of ministry, we had two letters of, of concern from the theater and two letters from the city. All four letters said basically the same thing. They had some issues with parents dropping their children off at the theater for an evening movie with some of the people that we had out front on break after an educational program. So we chose to resume the program a year and a half ago. We looked carefully at our situation and said, could we not make that mistake twice? So it's with some serious consideration that we have brought our application to you. I'd like to, if it's okay with the council, to have the president, Dale Johnson, speak to you about what Underground's about.
I'm Dale Johnson, one of the co-directors of Underground Oasis, one of the, the co-writers of Underground Oasis, along with, with Kirk Shea and another member we had at the time, and that's Leo Bristol from the roofing company here in town. Underground Oasis was not accidental in its origin. It came about as a result of a young man. We were called one night, before this ever became a, a program, we were called one night because of a, a young fellow that was suicidal, and they asked us to come and see if we could intervene because most of us have been there and done that at that one time. And, and we spent a couple hours with him, and we got done, he turned to us and he said, listen, I have a lot of friends that need to hear what you just told me. And that was kind of our mandate, and we kind of looked at each other like, really? Maybe we should do this. So we wrote the program within the next few weeks. And the difference in the Underground Oasis and AA and NA programs, of which we have no kicks with at all, but we felt like we needed to make, have, have another alternative for people who are in recovery. We're in the trenches every day with these people. We love these guys, and we love what, their struggle, we work with them every day, providing resources and support for these people. You know, the difference between A and NA is the fact that we believe that what you do does not determine who you are. We believe that who you are determines what you do. Are you, are you an alcoholic and addict? Is that who you were created to be? No, not really. We're, we're children of God, and what we, who we are determines how we act and how we do. So it comes in changing a perception of who we are, it makes a huge difference. A lot of people are coming along very well, clean and sober, but they're not free. They love to get loaded or drunk, although they can't, and they're miserable. But we find that the freedom that God gives is, is very amazing for most of the people that, that have come through our programs. And we, it's not for everybody, but we're seeing, four nights a week, we're seeing 20 to 30 people, 25 to 30 people. Weekends, we, we offer a meal to the community at 5:30 on Saturday nights, and we have a program after that. So we're, our, our future, it looks a whole lot different than it does right now because we have some plans for the future involving, and I think we can speak to that a little later, but I can't talk for a long time up here, but I probably could and bore you to death. But, but we, we are thrilled with what God has done. Steve Culkit is one who called me and said, I want to make a difference in this community, and, and I think your program will make that difference. That's why he gave us the whole building for a dollar and said, I really think this is going to make a difference in this community. So is that my bill? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir, if you haven't signed in, would you please sign the, please? And, and when you go up, if you would, go ahead and sign your name, and then once you start talking, we'll start the timer. That way we can make sure we have the minutes straight.
What was the name, what was your name? I didn't get that.
Dan.
Oh, Dan, you're Dan. Sorry. I just kept seeing your name, but I didn't know who you were. I'm sorry.
Mayor, councilors, I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. In the past, I've spoken about community and what that means and how we advocate for others and how part of that community, in some cases, is lost. And what I want to kind of go into as far as like this particular building is, I want you to think of me as an expert because I think this is going to be important. People on the planning commission are experts, and I agree with them. The leader of the planning commission works with probably the most effective nonprofit in town, Neon. She's the executive director. There are doctors in sociology on that planning commission. They also agreed. Y'all are also professionals in your industry. I would like to explain that I've, the National Board of Public Health Examiners thinks I'm an expert in some of these things as well, when they gave me my license. And what I want to explain is a need. The addiction rate in Oregon is in excess of 20%, and that's a 2022 number. And that doesn't include alcohol. When you really start to extrapolate the numbers, you end up in some weird space of 30 and 40% of our, our population in Union County having some sort of substance use problem, most likely with a co-occurring, co-occurring mental health disorder. There is no doubt that there is a need. There are, the folks that are in town, that are current providers for these services, are at capacity. My wife works in that space. She's a psychiatrist, and they're at capacity all the time. Our friends at CHD are also at capacity all the time. There is currently a 45-day wait period for an existing patient to go see their doctor. This group does amazing work, and I think the presence of them being here today should be obvious. I think you'll feel the spirit. But I can tell you that this, I have knocked on the drug doors with this group. I have listened to Chief Bell about a house that they were trying to work with, and me and that man, and me and that man, and a couple other men, and we went and knocked on that door. And we provided them with things that allowed them to find a way out. And that, and we, we can't take credit for that house not being a drug house anymore because I think that belongs to Chief Bell and some other valuable participants in our community. But we can certainly help some of those individuals. The...
Excuse me, can I get your name?
My name's Wally Waller.
Wally. Can everybody just state their names just for me? Because I'm taking notes. Thank you.
My name is Tammy Johnston, and back in 2014, I was one of the owners of the building where Underground was housed. I was one of those people that got the letter from the city council and from the theater saying that people were afraid to let their children out because of those people. So you say you can't think about compatibility, well, we have to. And this is the perfect spot. It's far enough off a main street, but yet close enough. But if you had been the one that had to tell those people, sorry, they consider you those people, and you can't be here anymore, you would have known what it felt like to just destroy people. And with us being on that property out of the way, but yet close enough to lock in that we can help draw some of those people off of Main Street. But we don't consider them those people. They're people, plain and simple, children of God. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maxine, you can either pull your letter or read it or speak. Pick one. So we'll go ahead and pull her letter from the record.
So I've been around here a long time, and I know a whole lot of you, and I have been a part of getting the programs that didn't fit with the neighborhood for a long time. And there has never been a different group of people or needs that hasn't had a big squabble about it. And the Millers building, it's probably one of the ugliest in town, no offense to anybody here, but it's true. And nobody has stepped up to buy that use, that this is a great use for it. And I've been involved with the warming station, and CHD just opened their house on Jefferson just last week. And this is going to make a huge difference because you've got a place for people during the day, you've got the warming station for when that's open at night, they're doing resource, it's making a difference. And this is an evening pickup program, and it's, it's making a difference. You know, I take food there, and they're feeding 20, 30 people a night, and that's getting them off the street. And when I was taking food to the warming station and active with that, I heard so many good stories, people helping, getting helped by the oasis and getting clean. And it doesn't mean they stay clean, but hey, six months is better. And it is giving people a place where they can at least go feel some comfort, some security, and not be out doing crazy stuff on the street. And I do think we need another RV park.
My name's Derek Keller. I've been a member of this community.
I've been a member of this community my whole life, like the fifth generation. I'd just like to say I've been a part of the Underground since when Dale first started it here. And, and, and up to today. And, you know, this program has made such a change in so many people's lives. You know, I know some people may look at, you know, as comments been made about, you know, those people, you know. You know, in God's eyes, each and every one of us are one of His children. He isn't looking at, at us, you know, as any different than, you know, than our neighbor. You know, every one of us has skeletons in our closets. I don't care who you are. The Underground is an opportunity. And I've seen so many people that have come there and they've been able to get free from the things that have, you know, created them a heartache and, you know, mental breakdowns and, and, you know, that type of thing. And, you know, this is something that this community needs. And I don't know if you guys remember Good Samaritan Ministries years ago? And, you know, the impact that had in this valley? The churches were involved. This valley was blowing up with people coming off of addictions. I mean, it was, it was an awesome thing to see. You know, in this Underground today, I feel it's like, it's like a step from that that it's creating that again, you know? It's a safe haven for people. You can go and, you know, talk about whatever. And you're not condemned. You're not looked down upon, you know? And, you know, it's like we say, you know, you're one of God's children, you know? And anyway, I think, you know, the Miller's Building, I mean, there's so many opportunities that can arise from that for people here, homeless, you know? And I think it's something that we really need. So, thank you.
I just, Tammy Johnston, I wanted you guys to know that since we opened a year and a half ago, almost 90% of the people that come to Underground are now gainfully employed. Thank you.
This year, that rate has increased by 567%. Sorry. I've lost like a dozen friends this year. If we're talking about needs and compatibility, I'd say one acre out of 100 is worth the needs and compatibility for this community to have some life and hope. And that's what this place gives. Thank you.
Well, since I'm standing right next to the thing, I guess I'll get up and talk. Thank you for...
Can we get you to sign a room?
I'm Tom Forsythe. And I've been the volunteer minister at the Union County Jail for the last 10 years. I go there every Sunday night. And I don't preach and I don't teach, but I need tears. If I have no tears, I failed. But I'm just saying that now, for the last year and a half, I've got a place to send these kids after they get out. And out, I got their phone numbers. I go knocking doors. I get them over there at the Underground. It's a great place. Just last night, we were talking about family. We had another couple come in from the coast and the need for their family. They want their family. And then, where's Wayne? Wayne got up, one of our guys got up, and he said, "This is better than family." That's what he said. And it is, it is. And we're there for them. And don't break my heart. We need that building. Thank you very much.
Any more testimony in favor?
My name is Dale Cardwell. And I've been in La Grande for two years. I'm a pastor in town. And I come from a background, having moved from Salem, where I went through much of this same kind of process as we worked hard to meet the needs of the people that were marginalized. And those people, not to repeat that, but to figure out what it was that would make them have the courage to come and seek support. So when we talk about some of the different commercial properties and such, one of the things that some of us have a hard time with the perspective of is the person that's in need and how they envision the place they're coming into. And so to come into a place that's sanitary, that's painted nice, to have all of the visual effects that most of us would say is nice, usually will make a person in great need feel very uncomfortable. And so the, the walls are immediately up there. And so I know from my past experience, when we moved into a place that was an old warehouse over in Salem, it was amazing what occurred. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people we were able to help just by moving locations. And so when I, when I see this, I understand the needs for zoning. I understand the needs for different areas of our society. But if you take into account the amount of economic impact, which you can't calculate by what we're doing, in helping people become more productive in society, that's going to have a greater impact than a business that comes in and trucks beer around. And, and not to say that that isn't important too. And it's, I mean, all of these things are important in our society. But I would say location does definitely matter with regards to the people that we serve. And I've seen it firsthand over many years. Thank you.
Neutral?
I just want to share a couple more things. I don't know if any of you have ever experienced...
Mayor, we can't...
You can't keep coming. Once you're up and you're done, we're done. Sorry about that.
It's a land use piece, and so there are certain parameters that we have to stay within. So I apologize.
Neutral? Opposition?
Thank you each and everyone for coming up and testimony. At this time, I'd like to invite Counselor discussion.
I see that there's need, definitely a need. And I, I like Dale's explanation of the building. I think that was very poignant. And the location is ideal.
I also like to state that I think them trying to go to a different building would be anti-productive because they got this building for a dollar, you guys said, right? Correct? Why would we want to make this organization, this group, go to another place and pay thousands of dollars when they could use those resources to benefit our community? I feel that there's a need. I'm in, in the church I belong to. I am part of addiction recovery, I'm a facilitator. Oh, I'm getting emotional. Ooh, calm down. Okay. There, there is a need. And I think that is one thing that we don't address is the cause. And I don't think people realize, when they start going down that, that spiral with addiction and so forth, they forget their self-worth and what they can actually accomplish in life. And I think this is wonderful that there's a volunteer group, a church community, that is willing to take this on, that it is not a government facility and so forth. And this is all volunteers, and I think it's warranted, and I think there's a need. And, and I praise all of you for taking this upon yourself and trying to help those in need.
I mean, I agree that I think there is a need. And I think you guys have shown us the need that, that this organization brings. I guess I am wondering, have you checked out the other places? Because that wasn't ever mentioned, whether you had checked out the other places that Mike identified. I understand the dollar. So that definitely has a big impact on it. But I don't know if you have checked out all the other places to see if they're compatible or not to yours. And then I kind of wonder, what if somebody moves in next to you that will, that will change the dynamics of that area? How will you address that? I just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, Marion, I'll answer part of that. And then, then you guys can ask Dan the other parts, since he's the applicant. But in Dan's application, there are four to six sites specifically listed. And I think he's, has real estate listings and some other information of sites that were available at the time he was putting his application together. Some of them, maybe even all of them, aren't available today just because of the time that has elapsed. But, but he's identified in his application, either the square footage of those, you know, may accommodate, you know, the immediate move in and the size at that moment in time. But it did not fit any of their expansion or any of the service needs that they plan to have. And so that, that is the biggest challenge that was identified in their application was the sites that are available and were available as they've been looking are either not in the right location because of the surrounding uses or mostly because the sites themselves were not large enough or did not have the floor plan layout or the capabilities of supporting the services they provide.
Well, thank you. Because, I mean, I read that too. But I wanted the people who are watching to know that they have checked it out.
Yeah, so that's in the application. And, and just for the staff side of that comment and the sites that we've looked at, we have not vetted them through Dan and/or the Underground Oasis group of, will these sites that we've identified, you know, I mean, there's the EO&amp;I building that may or may not be available today. There's another one across the street over here on Washington that may or may not still be available. But those may also not fit their criteria for how the floor plan and space is. And so we have not vetted those. But, but there are sites that we've identified that are available. But it is really the tenant that needs to decide, is that site viable for them?
But then my next question was, what about if somebody moves in next to you that is not, that doesn't meet the needs that you have? Or they might object to what you're doing or something? How will you address that?
The applicant.
Thank you for your question. I'm Dan Beckner. So one of the advantages of that particular location is that it's surrounded by more industrial, commercial use as opposed to retail. So it was retail that got us in troubles last time. So there's none at all within, I would say, 200 feet. So, you know, we, we don't foresee any challenge in that area at all.
Okay, thank you. Because I never heard that here. And I wanted everybody at home that's watching to hear this information too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This reminds me a little bit of the shelter from the storm issue when the new courthouse took away their facilities that worked very well for them.
I for one, you know, I think we need to consider, we've got to balance the needs of the community as a whole. And to me, this is a high, high priority need that we have in our community. And this is a real issue. And it does have real economic impacts. And I, I look at this location, I think this is, this is great. And we've seen other issues with that. And so, yes, we've got a zoning barrier that we've got to, you know, deal with. But at the end of the day, the zoning has to work for the community. And I think if, if this is a need we have, then we make the zoning work. And, and, and we let it, you know, serve, serve the, the needs of the community. So, you know, and I just, the thought that this group is going to go out and find some other commercially zoned property that's going to be given to them for a buck. I mean, this is not a for-profit enterprise. We can't expect them to do that. They've got a real opportunity here to, to take advantage of space that has been effectively gifted to them. And I, I would hate to see us stand in the way of that.
And it's obviously a need for this community because there is, there is no place for these people to go. And we don't have enough public health. We don't have enough mental health. We have, the whole state is lacking in all of those facilities. So if you could do this and you're getting a 90% back to work, I think that is excellent.
I agree.
Yeah, I think balancing and looking at the, the needs of the whole community is important.
Any more discussion? Do you have something else, Mike?
I just want, before you guys close anyway, I just wanted to let you know that your conversation, while it's a little bit different, almost mirrors the Planning Commission's conversation. So the findings, the findings that are in your packet reflect the conversation that you're having right now. And so, so anyway, so next month, when you come back to make a decision, if your opinions are similar to what you're talking about today, I don't think we have to change much from the Planning Commission's recommendation. And you could make a decision to either support the application based on the findings that are already in your packet, where you can revise them and add to them or change them. Just wanted to let you know that your conversation is consistent with theirs.
Did we pick the right people? All right. And with that, without any more discussion, at this time, can the City Recorder read the proposed ordinance by first time by title only?
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of La Grande, Oregon, rezoning property from light industrial to general commercial on the zoning map, from industrial to commercial on the comprehensive plan map, and declaring an effective date.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is continuing to October 4th, 2023, at which time the proposed ordinance is scheduled to be read a second time by title only and considered for adoption. Thank you. All right. New business, considering appointing a citizen to the Arts Commission. That will be me. So it looks like we have a vacancy in the Arts Commission. Ms. Avila has not previously served on any commission or committees. I'm just trying to look here.
Mayor, do you want to just hold up and let everybody go? We still love you, Karen.
Once everybody moves out, we will continue.
I think so. Could that be simpler?
So at this time, we are going to consider Nicholas Avila to be appointed to the Arts Commission for a remainder of a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2023.
Just the way the terms rotate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
They can always reapply when December rolls around.
Wow, just to then, okay.
That was actually a motion, so if anybody wants to, that would be great.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Perfect.
Does that fill the commission, or do we still have empty spaces?
That should fill it.
Okay.
All right, that was our new business. Uh, county commissioner is gone, so he will not be here today. Staff comments?
You didn't hear enough from me tonight. I have more.
Appreciate it.
I'm, I'm going to hopefully be quick, because I'm going to actually ambush Robert, because he doesn't know my comments yet either. But, so I'm going to be applying for a grant, and so next month, I'll probably be asking you for approval after the fact. And so, uh, we're, uh, within a week or so of, of completing our economic opportunities analysis that's going to identify our commercial land need. The next phase is a GOAL 14 urban growth boundary expansion process, which is in the budget and which we were going to be paying for a combination of economic development and planning. Uh, so that's how the budget is structured. Uh, well, the state has a, a grant opportunity for technical assistance with economic development as their number one priority, and I was contacted today and asked to apply for that GOAL 14 process so that we can use the money we budgeted as a match and possibly do either more or a more comprehensive evaluation. But I just want to give you a heads up that, uh, we're almost done with that need study, and, uh, so that'll be coming to you soon for the start of the adoption process. Uh, but, uh, more importantly, uh, I'm hopeful that we're going to get a pile of money from the state to help us with the next phase.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Can I ask you about our sewers?
I am the wrong person to ask about that, but, uh, the, the right person is here.
Yeah.
You could certainly ask me, but I don't know if I could give you a good answer.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Next.
I've been summoned.
Oh, okay. So I know that we have 82, 85 miles of sewer, okay? And we just got a new budget that we're going to go ahead and replace them, you know, put that inside.
Certainly, yep.
Okay. How many have we, how many miles have we replaced so far, and how many more miles do we have to go?
So in, in the council action form, it says over the past 30 years, I believe we, it might be 31 years this year that we've been using this specific method.
Right.
We've done about, on average, a mile a year.
Oh.
So with the 83, you know, basically the answer is this will never end. So by the time we get through the city and replace all the old aging lines, you're going to be hitting the 50-year life cycle of those lines.
And then we're recycling again.
Then you go back through and do it again. The only problem you run into with this method is, is every time we line them, the diameter closes.
Goes smaller and smaller.
So our capacity of those lines shrinks, and also it makes it so we can't maintain or inspect the lines using our cameras and equipment that we have. So at some point in the future, we may have to shift that method, but we don't see it at this point.
So you're just hoping that we'll all be gone by that time, right?
No, that's, that's actually one shift in public works we've been trying to make in the last five years. It's no longer worrying, you know, it's not my problem. Our mentality is, is, you know, let's make sure we plan for the future so we can fix those problems. Costs a lot of money to do it twice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
So while I'm here, I guess I'll just give you a quick update on streets, because I know that's always a hot topic, so.
Second Street?
Uh, yeah.
We've got B Avenue, looks great.
B Avenue, we got up there to B Avenue on one of our low times during a rainstorm, so, uh, we are targeting four more major pave jobs before the snow flies. So we're looking at Jefferson from Second to Walnut.
Second to Walnut.
Walnut, yes. Uh, Spring from Washington to Fourth, Willow Cove to the railroad, and Second Street, everything that is torn up currently. So no new stuff will be torn up this season. Uh, you know, we're also trying to get ahead of the game for the spring for some of these ARPA projects, and we found a new hurdle. The supply chain is drastically behind. So one of the things we're trying to do to get ahead of the future is going through and replacing all those water and sewer connections that may go bad under these new roads so that we're not cutting them right after we fix them. Well, currently, as of today, if I order a water center for a water service that we need to replace, the wait time is about 52 weeks. So, uh, you know, we're trying to get out ahead of those things. That's, you're, you're not seeing as much jump on some of those ARPA funds as we're trying to get parts in. Uh, the ones that we did name, you know, Spring and Willow, those ones are advantageous because they don't have a lot of taps in them that need to be replaced. So we're really going through the list. It will probably shuffle as we go through there, as we try and expedite the projects that we can get done without the parts and put the other ones in the position where, uh, we're not paving over a street we may have to cut in the near future, so.
Do you have a due date for Second Street? Like when you think it might be?
When, when all the moving pieces quit moving. So, uh, I anticipate it will be paved by the end of the month. We are currently targeting, I think it is the week of the 18th. That may shift a little depending on how, uh, work crews move in, the weather, you know, all the little pieces. This year has been really difficult. I know it's wonderful that we're getting all this rain, and when it comes in large quantities, but it really delays the work because you can't jump back on a street right after it rains an inch because you're going to destroy your subgrade. You're going to have to rework the whole thing where you're going to build a street that just isn't going to hold up. So it's caused a lot of delays, a lot of moving around, so it's been an interesting year.
So when is 12th Street?
12th Street is one of those that we have a lot of services. So we are kind of trying to push it to the spring. You know, we've put together a couple of ideas of maybe we just replace the taps up to the curb line, and then when the parts come in, we'll go from the curb back to the meter. Not really an exciting way to do it. You're mowing twice, you're in a restricted work area, but it might be nice for, you know, pet paths, because we are also finishing up our study on community pathways, and 12th Street is one of the targeted areas where we might be building a walk-bike path that could, you know, come in there. So.
That would be much appreciated by a lot of our community members who run down, I mean, you look at the foot traffic and the bike traffic on Gekler just because of the, the pathway. And we can, you know, that's a circuit that a lot of them follow. I think, uh, the community would have a lot of support.
So, and if, if you haven't seen it yet, you know, the city is still finishing up the Community Pathways Grant, which is going to identify a pathway from Gekler into the downtown, which will be, you know, giving us options of pathways or, um, you know, eliminating parking, you know, telling us the different ways in which we can create a pathway that's a multi-use walk biking path that would get from Gekler up into the
Chip seal. I, I noticed that this happened all along Gekler, and, and it was kind of interesting, and I wasn't sure what was going on. It looked like we were doing something worse to the roads, so.
Yeah.
Can you, can you just briefly explain that? Because I had a lot of questions, like, what are you doing? It looked so nice, and.
Yeah. Well, you know, so Gekler, we chip seal. A lot of the ones that we do the grind inlay, we will chip seal. So when we grind an inlay on Gekler, um, the cost per square foot to actually get that smooth, beautiful surface in a bike lane is tough to warrant when we've got such bad roads everywhere else in town. So what we do is we grind an inlay in the driving surfaces, and then we come back with the chip seal. The chip seal creates an even surface where we can seal off those joints where the grind came through, and it's also, you know, getting back at the bikers for all the problems they cause us through the year. Uh, most of them, most of them will say.
I want that on the record, Kyle.
Most of them will say that they do not like chip seal. We've spent a lot of time in the last five to 10 years of refining our chip seal. The chip seal is actually where they come over, they'll put it down, a layer of oil, we'll put rock on top of it. You'll do that multiple times. Uh, back in the day, you'd use a real, it's a clean mix, so you'd take like a half inch to a quarter inch rock, and you'd put it in the, on the oil, and it's horrible. I mean, I remember riding on it as a kid, and the number of scrapes I got was miserable. What we did was we decreased the size of the rock. It still keeps the rock-to-rock contact, so you get the structure and the five years out of the chip seal, but it creates a surface that more mirrors asphalt. So it's a smoother one. The first few weeks, you know, we'll get a lot of calls because the rock has to sit in the oil. We come back, we sweep up the rock usually after about a year. Most people don't notice.
You sweep it into the bike lane, right?
No, we sweep it and we take it away.
I wish the bike was a lot better there.
Into the bike lane, despite people driving.
It does end up over there. And, you know, Gekler's a difficult one. One side has a curb. Sweeping up rock against a curb is real easy. You don't have that curb to hit up against. You know, we, we do have methods to get it out of the bike lane, and usually we do. We have a large broom that you put out on the front of a tractor and things like that, so. Um, but yeah, Cove Avenue, Washington, Burr, a lot of these have all been chip sealed and seem to be pretty highly trafficked by bikes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is Adams Avenue anywhere on the horizon?
Did you say five years or something like that? ODOT said?
So it was originally scheduled in 2019 for what they call profile grind. At this point, the, the divots in the road, the ruts are too deep. You can't profile grind with what we have left.
Okay.
So, um, when the ADA lawsuit came through and the state shifted all their money to, uh, ramps, they're still working through that process. Uh, last time they filed the STIP, which is the State Transportation Improvement Project List, uh, went through 27. Adams is not anywhere on the list. So unless we find another way to find a way to fund it or assist ODOT in funding it, because we're not going to fund it with our money, it's a state highway.
So we can't even patch the holes that are in there?
We can in the crosswalk. That's our only jurisdiction.
Yeah, I would say there's a couple of them in the crosswalk, okay.
Crosswalk is our jurisdiction. Everything else is ODOTs. So, um, we can assist by, you know, applying to some of the larger federal funding structures to try and, you know, partner with ODOT in getting funding to fix Adams Avenue, which would, you know, be nice. Um, but they're pretty highly competitive at this point, so, uh, we're going to try, but I'm not going to promise something that I don't know that I can deliver.
When does the chamber become a safety thing for ODOT?
Uh, you know, uh, we just went to, uh, I think Counselor Dudo sent me a webinar that happened, that they started to talk about the future of ODOT and their financing, and they had projections in the next 10 years that they would be in a deficit of three-quarters of a billion dollars. So they're going through a 10% cutback in services, so you're going to see state highways get worse, you're going to see less maintenance, you're going to see less people plowing snow. Uh, with the 10% cutback, I think they got it down to like a $200 million deficit in the next 10 years. So, um, I, I don't know that they're really going to point to it and say it's a safety hazard. There isn't a lot of crash data that supports that it raises to a higher level than some of their other roads, so.
That's true.
Yeah. I'm, I'm more concerned, I think the biggest one that I heard that, that they're going to stop painting fog lines on some county roads, just because there's no money, and painting fog lines was one of the easiest grabs. Now, that's not like down Cabbage Hill, but, you know, some of the other county roads where you're out, and there is no stopping you from going in the ditch. So, yeah.
Hey, Kyle, just one more question, but refresh my memory. There, there were rules around the ARPA funding where we had to have the dollars not only allocated but also spent by a certain date. Art, do you feel like we're still okay there? We've got enough of a buffer? We're, we're still going to be on target with some of the supply chain delays that you, you mentioned, or, or do we need to get, start sweating about this?
Not sweating yet. I think you, you have another year, we have until December 26th to spend the funds.
Oh, okay.
I don't think there's a way to sweat at this point. There's still a lot of options. If we get to a certain point where we're, we're running out of the physical ability to pave roads, then that's where we start to have to look out of house to start bringing in contractors to pave roads and things like that. I'm not real excited about it just because, you know, looking at the, the numbers, we can pave roads for about half the cost that I can get a contractor for. So for the sake of trying to stretch those dollars to every road I possibly can, I'd like to keep the money in-house, but if it ever became a threat that we weren't going to be able to spend the money, I use, uh, Manager Stroup's advice of don't let them have $1 back.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Kyle.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Uh, just wanted to remind you that we have a traveling dino exhibit up at the library through September 19th. I know the Glave family has visited.
I haven't.
We have open hours for that. A lot of hands-on stuff. It's through the Museum of Natural and Cultural History Museum, so it's really fun, lots of fossils and, um, toys for the kids to play with. Also, um, just wanted to give a shout out to all of our Storywalk sponsors because they're awesome. We are, um, we have all of our books sponsored through 2024 now. Um, actually, we have one month available in 2024, so we will be starting on 2025 soon. So, um, you might want to install another Storywalk somewhere around our community, maybe. Anyway, that's it. Thanks.
Carrie, really fast, can you update us on the art project? I, I was looking, it looks like things are coming up.
It's wonderful.
I'm sorry. Anyways. Hi, I'm Mayor Council. Terrible. Clearly, these people were here to see staff reports, so thanks, everybody, for staying. Really appreciate that. You guys are amazing. Thank you. Um, I'm Stu, the Parks Recreation Director, so the Art Commission, um, is, is doing that project, so that's why I'm involved. So, um, yep, underway, should be done by, in a month or so, maybe? Um, he did a bunch of projection at night, so he could trace all the, the things, and now he's on the painting, right, Carrie? Yep, pretty awesome. So it's going to be great. It's going to transform. That's, uh, it's completely funded by grants, so it's, it's pretty great. It's pretty awesome. So actually, we overfunded it with grants. They gave us more money than we needed. It's pretty cool. Um, so I'm going to bookend this. Okay, so that's a good thing. Um, let's put the bad thing in the middle. So somebody may have seen on Elkhorn broke a bunch of trees that we planted. Um, after the Country Music Festival at Fairgrounds, we planted about, oh, I don't remember whether 25, 40, something like that, trees. Um, somebody went by and broke about seven of the oak trees, um, that were donated, um, to the city, to, to our department, um, paid for completely by donations. So, um, there's an active police report on it, and we're taking, I mean, sure, they're taking tips, as well as if people wanted to donate, they could do that to replace those. Um, it's about 200 bucks a tree, so it's not really a joking matter, so it's unfortunate. Um, it, there's no security cameras or really any witnesses or any leads in that case, but it's important to us, so, um, hopefully we can get those back restored. Um, speaking of terrible things happening, the Morgan Lake Dam could breach. It's a high-hazard dam. However, um, it's not in danger of doing that. It's been classified that, that's my hook. See, now you're all listening. Um, there, it's been classified a high-hazard dam by the state, which means that it qualifies for some funding opportunities. So we're going to do a little dam breach exercise next month with the state dam inspector folks and emergency responders, first responders, and that will qualify us. So it'll be one of the things that helps qualify us for the natural hazards mitigation plan that Kyle's leading, uh, that it's rolled into FEMA funding, so we can fund a, a diversion berm potentially, that if the dam breaches, it bounces off the berm and goes somewhere else other than LeGrand, right?
Can I interject?
Of course.
Okay, so in case that does breach, okay?
Right.
I live down and we flood, okay?
Yes.
It goes through my garage, it goes under the house.
Lots of people do, yes.
Yeah, I know. So would you, how would you notify anybody that's down, down that way?
Yeah.
Know that's going to happen, so you, we can get it pumped out?
There's a whole, yeah. It's a good question. That's what the plan execution's all about. So the plan takes us through all that, takes us through public works, public safety, emergency responders, all those responses. It'll be a tabletop exercise that we'll run through the plan and do that. Gary's probably can speak more about these sort of tabletop exercises, but the way I understand it is, the plan's already made. We have that from 2013-ish, and so when we go through it, we update it, we make sure it's relevant, and it goes through all those processes.
So how long does that process take? If it's ready to, if it's ready to breach, is what I'm saying?
To, to, I don't have the, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
It's, all those processes are in there. I just don't have it memorized or in front of me.
That's the purpose of that exercise?
That's one of the main purposes. If I'm speaking out of turn, you want to sub in here? He's, he's a.
So I have one other question, Stu. So the dam was repaired a few years ago. Yes, it was inspected.
Well, the dam's inspected, inspected every single year.
This is something that they.
So. If I could interject, you are correct. A different portion of the dam was repaired, I think it was before your time, Stu.
That was in my head somewhere.
It's a different phase.
You did all the gravel in there.
Well, there's, there's two or three different projects in here. The Saddle Dam was repaired because it was topping at one point. So there was a siphon installed and there was some repair because of invasive animals, right? And then there, because of that, the dam inspector recommended a spillway construction, which we funded and did in about 15 or 16. And the spillway is simply a, if the water comes to a certain point, it hits the spillway and relieves the pressure. So then the main dam, which is not the Saddle Dam, that's the Morgan Lake Dam, that would head down the Oak Canyon to Denise's house.
Okay, that's.
Right. So there's several layers here and there's, there's no danger of the dam. I'm just being silly with the hook. There's no danger. It passes inspection every year. It's, it's classified as a high-hazard dam because of the potential loss of life if it came into town, right? With the population.
Right.
So EAP, you want to talk about that, Gary?
Hi, I think, Mr. Mayor, City Councilors. Counselor Wheeler, I think I understood your question to, it's like, how, how would we notify people? How would you know if you need to like get your stuff and go? Is that what you were asking?
No, basically, okay, so we have some pumps ready because, yeah. Anyway, neither here nor there. But anyway, I mean, to know that, oh, it's coming because it does take a little while for it to travel down, like to notify residents that live, because I'm right, right there, to like get your pump out, get, you know, get ready or get sandbags or whatever we needed. Because when it comes down, it goes right down second and it goes into other people's basement and just goes woo right out.
Right, yeah.
I mean, how would we know?
Yeah, so the city of LeGrand, I think right off the top of my head, most recently updated our emergency alert and evacuation plan in 2018. We have been exercising the plan that we have in place pretty frequently as of late. A lot of this, you know, we, we've been listening to council discussions and city council retreats about the concern of the urban interface with fire danger. We did a Cascadia, if you guys remember, we did a Cascadia earthquake exercise earlier. I think it was last year. Just earlier this summer, we had a large number of first responders and emergency response personnel get together and do wildfire exercise that started out between Union and Cove and basically was our absolute worst-case nightmare for LeGrand. And so anytime we do that and when we exercise this tabletop, this Stu referenced about potential for Morgan Lake Dam breach, we exercise those plans that we have in place, which basically means that we discuss them, how would we implement them? And so to get into the weeds just a little bit on what that would look like, we have lots of different components dependent upon the circumstance and what we needed to do in terms of notify residents, maybe citywide, certain geographic locations in town depending upon what. And we talked about this in All Hazards. It could be fire, it could be flood, it could be lots of different, maybe a hazardous material spill. We would implement the same mechanism. So it could come through radio, media. I'm going to give you a plug in a minute, but there's a program called iPause where we can basically submit through Organ Emergency Management and we can get an alert that comes over. I don't know if you guys ever experienced an Amber Alert on your phone? Very similar. So we could do that geographically. Another thing that we really push, it's on the Police Department's website, is to sign up for emergency alerts so that we can do that locally. It's called, it's, we, we partner with Union County Emergency Services. They're a company by the name of Everbridge. And if you go to the Police Department's website, the tab's on the left. There's one that says emergency alerts. Click on that. You can sign up for it. And every once in a while, we use social media to try to just get the plug out there to remind people to do it. So you can put in your phone number and things like that so that we.
Sign up for the one with the county is not the same?
It's the same thing. Yep, so you don't need to do both. But you can always go, go in and update it if you'd like to. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that makes you feel better.
Right, yeah. Any other questions? Stu kind of threw me out there for being a tabletop exercise expert.
Well, Gary made the mistake of saying he didn't have anything tonight. So thank you. Last but not least, since we're doing the sandwich, right? So the good, the good, the bad, the good. The playground will be, you know, officially revealed tomorrow. The playground design, I think Elkhorn probably snuck that a day early, actually. But anyway, celebrate LeGrands tomorrow, which I'm sure that y'all have talked about a little bit. But that's where the committee is doing their big reveal, the big fundraising launch, which is, the goal's about 260 and they're at 65 already. So it's pretty cool when you're going to a launch with all that money. So good stuff and great committee. Sharon Langdon's holding it, leading it, and she's amazing. So appreciate all their hard work. It's going to be awesome to watch them go. Exciting. So about a $650,000 project. So it'll be, it'll be a lift, but we'll get about 60% of that through grant dollars, I think, or more. Thank you.
Thank you, Stu.
I would like to go next. Question for the council. So we have recently received a budget committee application. We have one open spot right now. As you know, budget committee only meets twice a year. So Robert and I were visiting about it. We didn't know if you wanted to go ahead and consider that application for October or do you want to wait until we do usually our recruitment at the end of the year? So what that entails for some of the new people. We have several committees and commissions and then some of the people that are on these committees and commissions, they actually expire at the end of the year. So my office sends out letters asking if they want to sign back up again or whatever. So they have that option to do so. So we do our heavy recruiting probably in December. And then in January, you'll see all of those come through. I'm sure all of you have experienced that already, mostly Denise and Molly, for the first time in January. So are we just looking for consensus?
Yeah, my, my view is there's really no urgency in appointing a budget committee member now when there may be a number of applicants when we kind of do that. So my suggestion would be just to hold this one and do it as part of that. But we did not want to make that decision unilaterally.
I think holding it sounds reasonable.
I think it makes sense to.
Yeah, we'll let them know that we're going to.
Yay, someone's excited early.
Any more staff comments?
Gary, wasn't there some kind of a project, I mean, something that you guys did up on Fourth Street the other day?
There was something, thanks for the question. There was something we did on Fourth Street. I presume that you're talking about the active threat, mass casualty, yeah, MCI. It's a mass casualty incident. And so we've been working on that for probably about six to seven months. It takes a lot of effort. Grand Ron Hospital initially came to Nick Vora, the Union County Emergency Manager, and I with a proposal that they would really like to partner with us on an exercise such as that. We did something pretty similar at LeGrand High School. I'm horrible with, because to me, it seems like it was a couple of years ago, but sometimes people remind me that, Gary, that was like four or five years ago. But in this case, we had about 50 to 60 first responders from all of the represented agencies in law enforcement, anyway, in the county and both LeGrand and LeGrand Rural Fire with their EMS personnel. And then there was about 30 people from Grand Ron Hospital as role players and participants. So it was a fantastic exercise to really test our response, the command and control, all kinds of things, and also provide the hospital the opportunity to test their policies and protocols. And so we're still working through the debrief, but at this juncture, it seems like a 10 out of 10 in terms of success. It was a great exercise. So these are the things that I was talking about a minute ago. Super high-risk stuff, fortunately, low frequency. But it's so critical that we train and work on these things because in the unlikely event that some of these things were to occur, we fall back on the training and, and the relationships and the coordination that we've put in place, so.
I have one question. Somebody's asked me, why did they do it on Fourth Street when it's such a busy street? Is it because kind of the hospital there, Fourth Street Clinic is there so they could participate? Is that the reason why?
Yeah, great question, and that's exactly it. Grand Ron Hospital wanted to use their regional medical clinic. As you well know, they have quite a number of facilities. Using the same policies and protocols that they have in place are for each of their facilities. But to do something like that at Grand Ron Hospital up on Sunset is really not feasible because there's, it's never closed, there's patients there, and so it's too much conflict. So we did this literally right after the regional medical clinic closed for the day. But it's, it's a large facility and it was their desire. And so we tried to mitigate the impact to the, anytime we did these things. Yeah, we always try the best we can to mitigate the impacts to the public. And yeah, we know there's a lot of closures up there, street closures, but it was only closed for just a few hours. Yeah. Anything else?
That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Robert?
Thank you. Just two things real quick. Calendar reminder, Monday night, we have the work session to talk about potentially amending the city charter. So that is the conversation that the council will have about, do we want to look at changing the way that council elections are conducted in terms of positions? We want to do anything different with the term of the mayor, that sort of thing? Revisit the conversation about the ranked choice voting. So we'll have a packet out for you, but that's Monday night.
Can I, can I ask a question just for curiosity? I understand we need to do this, but why September 11th?
Just how the, it's just how the calendar rolled out?
It is, I just, I don't know. I just feel that September 11th should be a day of, not respect, but it should be observed. And I think, I think people are forgetting about September 11th. And I think when we do a lot of things like this, it's, it just doesn't make it as important as September 11th really is. And I was just, I was just curious why that was. I just, I don't know. I rather, personally, I'd rather not meet, but I will meet if that's what we need to do. But I think in the future, I'd rather never meet on September the 11th. That's just my personal opinion.
It's certainly up to the council. If you do not want to do that, we could certainly reschedule it, but it's, it's up to you. It's not something that, it's a work session that we've got on the docket. We have a limited number of days and it is unfortunate that's when it happens to fall. So it's, that's your pleasure.
I plan stuff around it, so I would hate to not do it now. Because I canceled things to be here. And it's not a federal holiday, is it? It's just a bad day.
It should be though.
I understand your concern, Denise, but I think in the same breath, there, one way that we honor that is, is by continuing the operations of, you know, what is for us, our, our local government and, and not just.
To, with the choice voting portion of it? Or rank?
Well, we could. My concern about that is to turn it into a second work session on ranked choice voting. I think the focus, the intent of the focus of this one was do we or don't we want to amend the charter to change how we do the provisions of, is it individual positions? Do we want to do top vote getters? The secondary component is the ranked choice voting. And I'll just give you a preview. I don't think that we should be looking at putting the ranked choice voting before the citizens of LeGrand until after the next general election because it's going to be on the ballot statewide as to whether or not to do that at state-level offices. And if House Bill 2004 that has this on to be put before the voters, if that initiative passes, then that would require a standardized software system that would be available to cities that do adopt ranked choice voting in the future. So the timing of when we would want to reconsider that, I think, part of the conversation to have Monday night is when would we do what we were doing? We could certainly have the county ask the county clerk to come. We've already put together a memo that talks about the mechanisms of amending the charter and how that vote would work. But it's up to the council how you want to do that.
My only reason why is for the ranked choice voting. She's an expert, and I mean with that, I would rather her there. And I see your point is now it's just more of timing versus putting it in place, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because the council has not reached a consensus on whether to even move forward with ranked choice voting. So I think having the county clerk come to explain in more detail what we already kind of had the exercise on, I don't know if this was the appropriate work session to do that.
Kind of two separate topics, right? I mean, related but separate because here we're talking about, you know, do we, you know, do we do a, you know, most vote getters and extend the mayor's term? Am I understanding that right? That was kind of the, the approach there?
Yeah, that's really, I think, the main focus for Monday night. And then kind of a, a additional conversation is if we are going to look at moving forward with changing the way that we currently do our elections in terms of positions versus positions versus top vote getters, would we also want to, at that same time, look at asking people to also make a decision as to whether or not to adopt ranked choice voting? I think personally, I think if you were to try to go out to the voters and say, hey, we want to, we want to reconfigure the way that we're doing our city elections to have the top three vote getters, assuming that's where you landed. And at the same time, it's like, and oh, by the way, we also want to try this new thing called ranked choice voting, which kind of sort of does a similar sort of a thing, but not exactly the same way? I envision people's heads exploding.
I agree.
And so you would essentially. What's that?
This is what we're going to discuss on Monday.
It is.
Okay, so.
Should we carry on then?
We can hash it out on Monday.
That's why I'm saying, let's not bring the clerk in at this point. And then. And then just the other calendar reminder is on the 25th, housing production strategy from the incentive and implementation piece, some additional conversations. So if you look carefully at the calendar for your work sessions, you can see kind of a theme where we're dealing with land development-related stuff. System development charges are coming because we wanted to kind of stack those things in kind of an interrelated sequence. So just so you know.
I just want to comment back on what Denise had said. I, I agree that September 11th, it should be a day should be remembered. So maybe that night in that work session, we can have a moment of silence just to recognize that. So that's not forgotten.
That's all I had.
Robert, can I just ask a quick question? So we, we had a couple of high-profile resignations in the city since we last met. Are we, are we making any active efforts to try to make replacements there?
You talked about city staff?
No, I think you were referring to the tourism and.
Chamber of Commerce.
I was like, I didn't remember.
No, Chamber of Commerce.
Vice President and the.
Yeah, so in, in both of those cases, the city does not have an active role in those replacements. The Main Street Board is solely responsible for that. Timothy Bishop is a member of that board.
Okay.
For the Chamber Board, that's the Chamber Board's deal. We do have a counselor that sits as a voting member of the Chamber Board. So that is completely up to those two bodies.
Chamber Board, no, we're not a voting member on that.
What's that?
What are you talking about?
I thought, I thought the, really?
I'm not a voting member. I'm the representative.
So, so we do funding, we help with funding for those positions. But we don't have a, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, and, and. Yeah, and, and just speaking to that, um, one of, one of the conversations that, that I had with the chamber's executive committee, because the question was asked about, um, funding for salaries moving forward, uh, I provided the executive committee with the letter that was given to the, the chamber board, um, that reiterated that in terms of the salary for the director, the council's decision was to allocate an increase. Uh, and what I explained was that wasn't specific to that chamber director, that was for the position. So that could be included in whatever salary range that they're offering and that the council, uh, had not closed the door on other changes to supporting the salary of that position, but there was an expectation that would be some compensation study and also a discussion about the allocation of time between tourism and the chamber function, uh, that we kind of talked about, uh, when we talked about, should we allocate any other dollars? So that's kind of where that is. And I've offered any help that they would like, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good, Robert. Back to you. Excellent. Ms. Molly, do you have anything?
I don't, thank you.
I do. I went, I attended the Northeast Oregon Housing Authorities meeting, our board meeting, and, uh, just wanted to tell you that September 15th is supposed to be opening. They have a temporary occupancy, um, on building one, two, and four. So they should be opening that and that's, that was going to be about thirty units in that. And the other part was, I was going to ask the council, which I think I have a volunteer. You said, you said, this is for the, uh, the Community Harvest Festival. And, you know, we're working, the Main Street is working with the chamber and the Rotary and Optimists. Everybody has a little piece of it. The chamber is doing the chili cook-off and I think it would be great if the council would be represented there.
What is the date on that?
It's October 7th. And David said that he made a killer chili.
Did you want all the council to?
Well, I think that we could all be there to help support it, if he's still willing to do it.
I'll, I'll have to check. I, I didn't realize that that date might conflict.
He just said it before the meeting today. And I know that Gary is looking at getting some police officers to do it and challenging the fire department.
Oh, even better.
Yeah, our works department. Our public works. Oh, okay. Or the city manager's office.
Been about elk season.
You're making elk chili.
Yeah.
Got to kill one to do it.
So I'm just suggesting that the council have, uh, have a representation there at the chili cook-off. Okay, okay.
That's a good idea.
Is that it?
That's it.
Do you have a time on that?
Well, they, I, they cook all day, but the chili, the tasting starts at 4:30.
Do you have to cook it there? Can you cook it at home?
No, you have to cook it there.
Makes more fun.
Yeah.
Ms. Denise, do you have anything?
There is a fee to enter the contest, which I think that, I don't know, do we have funds to do that for the city? Or maybe the council can come together and.
I would contribute.
I would too.
How, how much is, how much is the fee?
The fee to enter is $40. Yeah, see, we'll, we can cover that and the, and then we can chip in and get the ingredients and everything. But I just think it's important.
I can assist you if you like.
There you go. And I can help you with, you know, serving it and so forth because you get a little cupsy.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Denise?
You don't have to charge, you don't have to challenge us, though. I'd rather have you that day at my department.
Okay, um, I think we had a very productive meeting. I'm, I'm very pleased with the turnout. I'm, um, yeah, I think we're doing really well and I appreciate the staff doing all that they're doing. And I love the updates that you're giving us so we can participate more in the community and so forth. I, I just really appreciate that. Um, no, I think, I think that's it, pretty much for me.
Thank you. Great. Perfect. David?
I do, uh, two things. So also on October 7th, there's a cooperative effort between, um, some local religious groups as well as the County Emergency Preparedness and CHD. And it's, it's a community, it's open to the community, but it's going to be like an emergency preparedness seminar. And so they'll have educational instruction for people who are interested in things like food storage and, um, you know, other types of emergency preparedness. So just, you know, maybe, maybe watch for community calendars for that event. Um, the second thing is that tomorrow is Celebrate LaGrande and, uh, which, which is an event designed to celebrate the fact that this is LaGrande, this is our city. Um, uh, we have, I think there were some invitations for the city to be a little bit more involved in that, but Chief Bell, Chief Cornford also sit on the board, um, of that event, uh, and, and so, you know, please, just an open invitation for anybody to come out, free hot dogs, ice cream, soda, um, and a lot of information about the city and some good fun events. Uh, Stu, are you going to be emceeing that again? Wonderful. So we'll have some good representation from familiar faces there and a great event for the community, uh, family friendly very much.
Did you get all the volunteers you needed?
I'm not sure. Jeff was kind of keeping track of it. I just sent it. I just know I'm volunteering, so.
And that's down at Adams and what time?
No, it's, it has changed to Riverside Park. So a little more open area for, you know, kids to play and set up and so, yeah.
In what time?
Five to seven.
Okay, for, because of work, okay, five to seven. I thought it was in Adams, I'm sorry.
You stole mine.
Uh, that's it for me. Oh, oh, I, sorry, I do have one more thing. Um, just to, uh, really want to commend our local law enforcement. Uh, we had, we had an event happen at my business a few weeks back and, um, I live three minutes away. And by the time I got there, we had, we had four officers that had already responded to that event. And, um, just, I, I couldn't believe how quickly, uh, they responded, the professionalism that I observed. Uh, we, we should be very proud to have, um, that level of service in our community. And, um, uh, so just to mention that.
Perfect. Like I said, you stole mine. I was going to say that. And the mayor is volunteering to help cook as well.
There you go.
So I was fortunate to go to the economic summit. And one thing that all of us as councilors need to do is thank each and one of, each and every one of the staff for, uh, everything they do for our community. We had representatives, we had senators, every one of them came to me and told me how great our city is. And that is from our staff. And so I want to say, not everybody's here, but I would like to thank each and every one of you. You guys did an amazing job. Uh, like I said, we get a lot of praise, how beautiful our town is and how great it is doing economically. And that is nothing up here. It's all you guys, every day that you work hard and do a great job. And that's all I have. So with that, I am going to adjourn the meeting.
You didn't get to have the end.